Okay, it is six o'clock and all the members of the board are here. We have a quorum and we will call this meeting to order. We will start with public comment period. Do we have any public comments on items that are not on the agenda for tonight? None here, none online, then we can proceed to the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pass the gene unanimously.
Yes, okay, and then we have, the gift acceptances were all on the consent agenda, so we move to the appointments.
Do we want to make a note of the proclamations that were on the consent agenda?
Yeah, let's do that. Go ahead.
Okay, I just noticed that there are two proclamations on the consent agenda, and I should have been slightly more prepared to make this, but one of them is proclaiming Ellen Garrison Day on April 14th, which is Ellen Garrison's birthday, and the other one is recognizing our public safety telecommunications workers with a week of...
Good, thank you. All right, now we move to the appointments.
Actually, I would like to just quickly thank the Concord Recreation Department's annual Shamrock Ball and the Concord Garden Club for the gifts to the town.
I don't know if your microphone's on.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
There's a green light on the front of it.
On the what?
There's a green light on the front of it that looks like it's on. Yes, it's on. But most people don't amplify in the room, they just go to zoom.
Uh huh, okay.
Well, I could put this microphone in the middle and then we can use, both use it.
That's okay.
It's fine.
Okay, all right, so now we...
They'll tell us if they're having a problem.
All right, so anyway, having dealt with the infrastructure, is how we call it, let's move on to the appointments.
Move to appoint seven election workers as included memorandum from the town clerk as included in the select board meeting packet.
Second. I have just one note, and that is with the reappointment of Frank Feeley, we should note the appropriate APP exception for his excessive appointment.
Right, but we're only moving the election workers right now.
Well, no, we...
When do we get there?
We, we, oh, I'm sorry, I, all right. We just moved the election workers?
Right, so I'm doing the second one now. Move to appoint Elizabeth Leonard...
Well, we didn't vote yet.
Oh, we didn't. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There we go.
All right.
Now we can go. Move to appoint Elizabeth Leonard of 23 McMillan Drive as a full member to the zoning Board of Appeals for a term to expire May 31, 2027.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, what do you want me to do here?
Just note the appropriate APP 10 exception because of the successive...
Kennedy, we don't have to do that in this, in this one because we actually were just properly restaggering their terms the last time, and that wasn't to count towards the term limits on the board, but we just needed to properly stagger the terms on the board, so really it was a shortened term last time.
All right.
Move to appoint Frank Rich Feeley of 347 Lexington Road to the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust for a term to expire May 31, 2026.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. And then finally, move to approve the town manager reappointment of Merritt Tilly of 65 Woodland Road for a second term to the Board of Assessors for a term to expire May 31, 2027. Keep going. Move to appoint the town manager reappointment of Yanis Sitzas, I'm sorry, Mr. Yanis, I'm sorry, I'm gonna, I probably mispronounced your name, of 33 Brook Trail Road for a second term to the Board of Assessors for a term to expire May 31, 2027.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, town managers' report.
Thank you and good evening. I did distribute a report earlier today, I'm going to walk through a few of those items. I wanted to mention that Deputy Town Manager Megan Zamudo was invited to speak to Concord Academy, to their Council on Community Engagement and Business Development last week. The group had questions about the MCI prison closure as to most people in town, and discussed how Concord Academy and the town can contribute or can continue to be good neighbors. Megan also was at an event at the Concord Housing Authority last week where Secretary of EOHLC, Ed Augustus, was present, that was on Tuesday. The group discussed affordable housing efforts in Concord and toward the newly renovated Housing Authority properties. Under sustainability, the Climate Action Committee, Concord Sustainability and CMLP recently hosted a series of Concord Green Home Tours to encourage residents to see firsthand how their neighbors have taken action to reduce their greenhouse gas emissions through electrification. There were two different events on March 9 and 23, and there were multiple homes of different sizes and different ages that were featured, just to give people an idea of what could be done, and there were approximately 100 residents that participated in the tours. Also, under sustainability, the celebration for Earth Day is, the planning is well underway. Concord Sustainability is partnering with Mothers Out Front, the Concord Free Public Library, and other organizations to present Cooler Concord Climate Festival on April 20th from noon to 4:00 PM at the main library. The event will feature activities and information from town departments and other organizations in support of promoting sustainable actions to mitigate the impacts of climate change. There is a, there will be a new monthly newsletter for economic vitality, and there's a link in the report for anybody who is interested in signing up and receiving that to learn about what's happening in terms of economic vitality in the town. The Recreation Commission will be hosting a public input session on April 4th, that's later this week, 6:30 to 7:30 at Hunt Recreation, 90 Stowe Street, for the purpose of receiving input on the recreation strategic plan. The comment period is open now and runs through April 26 at 5:00 PM, and the draft plan is available on the town's website. I wanted to note that our compost site at 755 Walden Street will be opening for the season this Saturday, April 6. It will be open on Saturdays from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM and on Wednesdays from 3:00 to 6:00 PM. It is open to all residents and accepts brush and branches, leaves and yard debris, invasive plant species, usable oil and latex paint, styrofoam if it comes in pre-purchased bags, and mattresses by appointments, and then processed compost is available to all residents while the site is open for pickup throughout the season. And I did, there is a brief note about MCI Concord update, Megan, did you want to review that, or do you want me to just...
I can just go through it.
Yeah, okay. Me.
Sure.
I'm sorry.
I don't know you.
I can't hear you.
Go ahead. Well, so we, we had a meeting today, a number of Concord officials with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council to discuss their work on various sites across the Commonwealth and what their role can be, and they talked about some of the projects that they've worked on, I think there was one in Medfield that they discussed a couple times, and a few others, and how they have partnered with the municipality and the Commonwealth in disposition of state property in the past, and so it sounds like they could be a resource for the town of Concord if we so choose to move forward, and there's a variety of options for how they could support the town of Concord and these efforts, from shorter-term, limited-scope contracts to kind of more involved partnerships. So it was an early meeting exploring this planning resource that is available to this community.
Well, maybe we'll talk about, more about that when we get to the discussion of the status of the charge for the...
I have a question about another item that Carrie just mentioned. So, Megan, thank you for going to Concord Academy, and I hope that's the first of several in terms of, that we might be able to start exploring the pilot payments, did that come up at all?
It did not.
I'm not surprised, but what caught my attention about it was, you know, how to be, I forget what the phrase was, good community neighbors, I think that's part of it, that we should let the public and all these institutions know that they are using resources, storm water, for example, will be coming up, but also fire, police, ambulance, et cetera, et cetera, and maybe we can ask them to contribute. It's a long-term project, but we should get going on it.
I, I want to second that, and I believe that Anthony Ansaldi, our CFO, has committed to looking into this actively after a town meeting.
Yes, yes, and he has a draft framework or proposal that the board might consider, but it's not yet been socialized with, with different groups in town.
I would love to, when the time is right, any, anything the board can do to help that along would be great.
Probably in the category of the less said, the better, I will not have any chair's remarks in the interest of brevity, maybe sanity, and then we can move on to the liaison reports.
I'll, I'll go quickly. On Wednesday, there was an arts convocation that was hosted by the West Concord Cultural District Committee, so the four different art groups within town got together at town hall here and exchanged ideas, and I think that was, it was a nice conversation, I think people understood what each, each other is doing, there were some ideas, there were some encouragement, so it was a nice, it was a nice conversation, and I think they decided to have it semi-annually going forward. And the second thing was, the Council on Aging hosted a candidates forum, it was well-attended. The wonderful thing about it, it was a different audience than was at the League of Women Voters, so we're getting a lot more people listening to the forums. I would just point out that some candidates modified their position on certain issues, which is fine, I mean, people change their mind as they learn more things, so if there's an issue that's particularly important to you, you might want to watch the tape, and you could contact the Council on Aging, and they've got the video available.
It also was not the typical Council on Aging audience either.
That's right. It was, it was good.
Anybody else?
Just quickly, it was a fairly light week, but I did mention last time, last week that the DEI Leadership Coaching Series is starting on Fridays, it's running, it ran last Friday, it will be taking place again this Friday at 8:30 in the Town House Hearing Room. It is not required that you make it to every session, so if anybody missed that and wants to get in on one of the, one or both of the last two sessions, that's still available. There were about 30 people there, and it was, I think, a very useful starting point for how we might engage with this topic in various forums.
Thank you. Linda, you usually have some reports.
Okay, the Concord Municipal Trust met and voted affirmatively to award the Novo Project $392,285 for 51 affordable housing units for their sewer improvement fee to be paid at the time when that is due to the town. And then there was a discussion about, which Keith Bergman initiated, which was well-received, in terms of, is it time to update some of the issues in the, and material in the envisioned Concord document, and then later in another meeting, the housing production plan as well, in preparation for being more contemporary in terms of what we're reflecting as our goals, and also the state of our current commitments when the MCI closure discussions proceed. And some of that will involve, if we so decide to do that, some of that will involve, again, town input as well as getting them approved at the state level. So it really was in the context of being more current for any discussions that happen at the state level regarding the MCI closure, so they know the full breadth of current projects, the 40Bs is an example, and other things. I also attended the Economic Vitality meeting, and I think what was interesting there for me, I am not the liaison, but what was interesting there for me had to do with how they're thinking about sort of going forward with some of their priorities and objectives, and the 250th certainly comes up over, over again. They also took positions on various articles, and one of the things I've been struck with this particular cycle this year is that we have so many different committees that are almost running many public hearings with various proponents of their articles in addition to our formal public hearings. And some of that has gone on in the past, but to the extent to which I see committees doing that this year is, is interesting, and we should just keep in mind and take into account maybe as we go forward. The other thing I would comment on is that CBA met and with Nova, it was a continuation of the public hearing, and all, they accepted 13, I believe, was the number of waivers that were requested. That particular evening of the ZBA, the project proponents for the Nova 40B had just received the letter of conditions, and so the public hearing has been extended until April 11th so that there still will be opportunity to comment on that, both from them and from the public. So that was significant. At one of the ZBA meetings, the CHCD received, had requested a special permit and site plan review for 406 Old Marlborough Road, and in fact, did receive that. And I think Finance Committee, yeah, I'll leave it at that, thank you.
So, speaking of public hearings, one of the groups that I'm a liaison to is holding a public forum, not quite the same thing, but the 2229 Main Street Task Force in their charge is supposed to hold several public forums, and the tentative date for the next one is June 4. And they have been talking with developers, and it seems as though there's a lot more interest in housing than any other use. Commercial uses, they're not getting a lot of interest. So that's going to come up at the forum, should be an interesting night, so that tentative date is June 4. And then I attended the Finance Committee, a few things that affect us, after long discussion, they voted to withdraw Article 14, which is the one that was going to use free, 1 million of free cash to offset the budget and lower people's taxes a little bit, and because concerns of free cash being basically overused in the last 10 or 20 years, it's dwindling now, so the, after a long discussion, they've decided they don't even want to wean off gradually, they're just going to not move that article. Another thing they voted was Article 20, the Concord Carlisle Regional School District Budget, there's still about 100,000 off the guideline versus the proposed budget from the school committee, and the Finance Committee talked about it, but they're not going to change the guideline right now, they're going to continue with that as their recommendation. And Article 24 was another one they voted, the Concord Public Schools Capital Budget, they voted to recommend affirmative action on that one.
Carrie, I have a question about the 2229.
Yeah.
So their main goal was to advise the town and the select board whether we should acquire the property?
Correct.
Right, how are they, where's, where's that?
So there are, they will be coming to the select board right after this public forum, or in early June. They would like to come June 10th, but they don't know yet if we're meeting June 10th, so it'll be pretty soon, and they'll be...
Is the forum to inform that decision, or is the forum to explore reuse?
Okay, so they have four work streams, and they're going to go through all of them at both the forum and with the select board.
Okay.
So one of the work streams is legal. What are all the legal issues for acquiring? Another work stream is reuse. What are the possible reuses and how would it work? And another work stream is operations. What's it going to take in terms of infrastructure, you know, if we did acquire it? And there's a fourth, I, I...
Risk.
Okay, so the risk and public communication about risk is the fourth work stream. So they're going to go over all of those, these are all issues that have to be thought through and solved before they can make this recommendation.
Okay.
There's also the, the liens against the property.
The liens, right, that's part of the legal work stream. So they're going to go through, some of it, especially the legal, is executive session still, so they won't be able to talk about everything, but they'll be able to give a good idea.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, then we move on to the, the franchise, the cable franchise issue.
Hi, Chief Technology Officer, Jason Bulger. So previously, the board voted to sort of extend the current franchise agreement that we have with Comcast, and the mechanism that we did that was to offer an extension to our current agreement. Our current agreement was a 10-year agreement, and the state of Massachusetts limits agreements to only 10 years, so we have to use a different mechanism to extend that. The mechanism is to basically ask the DTC if we can extend the period which we notify them of our acceptance or rejection of Comcast's offer. So it's, you've already voted to do this, it's just a slightly different process, so it's very procedural, and so we're just asking if the board will use this different mechanism to give us more time to continue the negotiations that are ongoing.
And there's a, there's some paperwork in, in the package, and we have to, we, the board has to sign that letter, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and is there any issue with that on the board?
So, just a question.
Yes.
Are we asking for the same amount of time, or does this process also come with sort of a different schedule?
It does, it requires 120 days at a time instead of six months, so this is a 120-day extension.
So we may be back at this...
We may be, hopefully not more than once or twice.
Okay.
So Jason, I just had a question, I saw the, in one of the forums, there was an amount, 590, something like that, thousand, that the town manager would receive for PEG, be able to use for PEG access, so I was just wondering where that amount came from?
I don't know, is this, was this in the packet?
Hmm.
Not this time.
No, it's not in this packet.
So, I mean, right now, we're undergoing negotiations, Teri, myself, and Sue Buskey are working with them, so the amount that we will get is unknown, but there was a capital amount in our current agreement that we have already received for, for payments.
Maybe that was the reference to that amount?
Yes.
Okay, we've already received it?
Correct.
And have to use it by...
Oh, no, it's already been appropriated, and it's part of the annual budget for the enterprise.
For 24?
I mean, so we received half of it upfront 10 years ago, and then the other half a few years after that, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyway, that could, yeah, maybe that's what the reference was, thank you.
Yeah.
Carrie, do we have a motion on this?
We do. Move to request from the Department of Telecommunications and Cable a 120-day extension of the time to file the preliminary assessment of denial regarding the franchise agreement between the town of Concord and Comcast.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item is the approval of the Concord Independent Battery firing on various occasions. I will, I will excuse myself on this one since I am a member of the battery. Yes, I am.
So you should leave.
I will leave. I will turn over the chair to the clerk.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah, I'm Phil Kenny, and I'm the president of the Concord Independent Battery.
Hi.
And with me tonight is Peter Mayette, who is the captain, and John Thompson, who is the secretary of the organization. And we come every year, this time of the year, we go through our compliance process for the ability to be able to get and receive approval from the Board of Directors, so we can go forward on that. And to that extent, I provided Shannon maybe three weeks ago now, something like that, you know, a pretty extensive package that goes through all the details that's required contractually.
Just a little closer.
So what we're trying to do is make sure that we have fulfilled those requirements, and again, put that package together about three weeks ago. We have some additional tack packages to that, elements to that package where we had, you know, additional training and some activities since that point in time, but I can get that to Shannon, we can go from there, but that's the intent, and that package is pretty inclusive of all the elements of the contractual requirements.
So if I look at this, it looks like there are eight pieces of that package.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
And so how many of those have been submitted and how many are in process?
They're all submitted, and the only one that's still somewhat active is that we've added additional training hours since I did this package.
Okay, great, thank you.
That's basically it.
Okay.
I mean, a lot of this stuff is, you know, requirements for the battery members to comply with, but more importantly, from a contractual perspective, to make sure the town and the select board can view the insurance policy that we have the coverage on, and where the town coverage is and all that, and some of the other stuff is, you know, pretty, we've done it every year, but again, it's just a repeat of that package, just to, you know, validate that process.
Any other questions?
Just one, so number seven says a copy of borescope inspections performed on 11 March of 2021, so is that something that's not typically done every year?
It's done on a five-year basis.
Five-year basis.
Contractually, we've done on a five-year basis, and I believe the guys from Waterville Arsenal up in Albany, New York, give us the parameters by how that, all that works, and they do it every five years and do a full inspection.
Okay. Great.
I just, I have a question, if you, thank you, if you could just remind me which ceremony it is where we retire the flags, and don't you also participate in that one?
Yes, that would be Veteran's Day.
On Veteran's Day, so I didn't see that listed here.
Yes, it's on there.
Yes, it is, I'm sorry, it is there.
The last item, right.
Okay. And one of the documents, yeah, okay, good.
There's a lot of paper, sorry.
Yeah, yeah. Good, thank you.
A lot of paper and a lot of training. A lot of paper and a lot of training. Thank you for all the work you-
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'd, I'd like to just add a couple comments. One of the things that we did this year, you know, in, in understanding that the 250th is coming, right, so visibility and a lot in publicity is really not a bad thing, I guess, at the end of the day. So, last Saturday, for the first time in five or six, seven years, something like that, we did open house at the gun house down on Lexington Road. We actually had 60 or 70 people come through.
Wow.
And, and it was pretty interesting. The Saturday was a pretty good day, except for the cold wind, but other than that, people came in very interested to, to look at the activity and to take a look at the gun house and, and in fact, the guns that are housing in it. And just two comments that I'd make about it. I had one lady come up to me, and the members were there to be able to explain the guns, and what we do, and how we do it, and all of that, but she was very interested into the, the history, right, and well, how long and how old are these guns, and where are the originals now, and they're back in the State House and all that. She ended up the comments to me, and she just said, "Well, I'm really, really appreciative of the ride I took from Boston just before the basketball game they were going to go to in, in the Garden," right, and said, "I just wanted to make sure that I expressed my appreciation," and thanked you folks, the Town of Concord, and for what you guys do to keep history alive.
Hm.
And that's what she said, which was a pretty, I found a pretty telling, telling statement, and one, one that we appreciated very much, so.
Do you do this in other towns? I mean, you, you take these guns on the road and go to other towns and-
At times, at times, you know, given-
We, the Thomas Hudner, we took that into Boston when his ship was commissioned in Boston.
Oh, okay, yep.
We often do the turnaround for the USS Constitution.
Yep.
And then we've been a strong supporter for the Mass Fallen Heroes in Boston as well.
Right.
So, we'll fire it on Memorial Day, prior to Memorial Day in there and stuff like that. But the USS Constitution, we've done a number of, probably 15 times probably in Boston.
Right. But each time that happens, and then we get that requirement, we go to the town manager and request approval for it, because, just to remind you, the guns are owned by the town.
Yep.
Right? So, we ask for approval to do so, and if you look in the package, we do include there an insurance coverage from riders that are associated with any kind of movement of those guns, guns outside of the Town of Concord. So, we cover the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And in the instance where we do fire up at the Old Mans in North Bridge, we cover the trustees' reservations as well, and they're provided with that rider as well.
Great.
How, how much does the insurance cost for, for all of this, per year?
I'm going to think it's like $1,700. Like, you're going to ask me, my treasurer's not here.
That's close enough.
It's, 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 it's a substantial amount, Emily, and that, along with the powder and the gun, and the horses are the biggest expenses that we have, right?
Horses, yeah.
But again, we're all volunteers, so we support ourselves as best we can.
I hope it's fun.
It is an interesting, well, a lot of us have been involved for 50-plus years of this, you know, so-
So, it must be fun.
It's a lot of work. I'm not going to say there's not, there's a lot of work, it's a lot of time, and, and, and the perspective of putting in the training hours, right, and, you know, making sure that we monitor our activities, because we want to make sure it's just sustainable activity. I don't, I'll only just, you know, preface it by saying, you know, we view the guns and the, and the gun house, to be honest with you, it's an attribute-
Yes.
-that the Town of Concord has in their hands, right? And we're just, we are just the, the serve, we, we serve to support that, that's all. We don't do any kind of accolades associated with that. But we, we appreciate the PR, because it's good, and to that extent, I'd like to just give a heads up on one thing. We are having the Channel 2 PBS will come out this spring and film us as we're getting ready for the 15th, and they'll, and they have a show. It's actually Yankee Magazine that's going to be doing, but it's on, it's on PBS, so-
Great.
We're doing those types of things to have a little bit of visibility and use that as a basis to keep, to keep the organization moving.
Right.
Let us know when it's broadcast.
Sure.
Let us know what the date is.
Sure. We haven't seen one yet, but they're coming, it's this year, this, this year, so-
Yeah. So, after all the volunteer hours that all of you have put into this, how are you bringing others along to continue this?
Slowly, but bit by bit, to be fair. And, and as one of the former town managers said to me, Phil, he says, "You've got a lot of graybeards in your organization," right? And that's true, that's true, but I mean, at the end of the day, we are all, like the open house-
That's what the open house is for.
-generated a couple of interests, you know, that came in. But I will say, over the last five years, four or five years, we've probably had six to seven, eight new members that wanted to join, and they have, you know, so-
Good.
All we can do is keep trying.
Absolutely. Well, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Ready for a motion?
Yep.
We want to move to approve the request for the Concord Independent Battery for permission to fire at the Town, fire the Town of Concord, not at the town, the Town of Concord, at scheduled 2024 celebrations and ceremonies, as included in the select board meeting packet.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good catch.
Somebody needs to get in here. I'll go.
Sorry, Mary, I couldn't.
Yeah, we'll drop that, that extra app.
Better check the minutes.
Yeah.
We better look at the minutes-
Incoming.
-when they come in.
So, what's, what's next? Public art? From the amount of paper we had on this, it looks like we might be building the Taj Mahal instead of a phone booth.
I'm sure the artists are feeling similarly. So, I'm here with Jennifer Hurley-Wales and Mike Sprague, who are the artists behind this project. You might recall, I was here earlier to get select board permission for the construction and sort of your, your blessing to move forward with the project, and they're now at the point ready to install it. As you'll recall, it looks sort of like a, an old-timey phone booth. There is a repurposed payphone in there. For free, people can pick up the receiver, press a button, and hear a curated poem read by a local poet. And the idea is for it to stay in place for about three years, with the poems changing periodically, most likely seasonally, but they're being a little loose with that. So, there is two agreements as part of this. One for Mike Sprague to finish the construction and for it to be installed on a concrete pad, and the other one is for ongoing maintenance and curation. Both of these are paid through the West Concord Cultural District donated funds, the Mass Cultural Council, and some private donations.
Great idea, very, very creative.
Really? It's, you know, it's amazing. We live in a town where one minute we're talking about guns, and the next minute we're talking about poetry phone booths. What a great place, really.
Mm-hmm.
But I think this is great, and I'm partic, I'm particularly happy that you thought about, you know, maintenance and installation and all the not fun stuff without losing sight of the really fun, creative stuff, so thank you.
Is there, is there anything about, I understand this is an agreement to install, and before we sort of approve the project in concept, is there anything that's changed since the last time you were here in December?
We really just beefed up, and I had it approved by Mina, the town solicitor. Chris Carmody looked at it. It was a chance for the team to get their insurance certificate, to have it thoroughly reviewed by the engineering department, division, to make sure they were okay with how it was going to be anchored, to talk a little bit about the scheduling, so they have to put in the concrete pad, it has to get cured for a week. So, it's more just some of those little nuances, but substantively, the project is exactly the same.
And I thought I gleaned from all the information in our packet that the expected installation is supposed to be completed by the, the end of May, is that right?
Yeah.
Great.
Bring into West Concord Day.
Okay. We'll look forward to that.
Yes. Ready for a motion?
Yeah.
Move to approve the request for the installation of public art, poetry phone on town-owned property in West Concord, to be installed in May 2024, and anticipated to remain for a period of three years.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If this is successful, we could have poetry booths all over town. And maybe we could also have them be places where you could recharge your electric car.
If you have cell service, but with poetry.
If you have, if you have poetry, you don't need a cellphone. Okay, so, all right, so that takes care of that. And then we have the discussion of, oh, the special town meeting, all right.
Yes, thank you, and good evening. I will note, we are running quite a bit ahead of schedule.
That's okay, but we could still stay late anyway.
Yeah. So, I, I'm just going to start by thanking the board for the opportunity to consider opening a warrant for a special town meeting inside of annual town meeting due to some changing circumstances. We wanted to talk to you this evening about a, a specific request and an article that we would put forward relative to a grid-scale battery. But we do recognize that there, once the warrant is opened, you may hear about other items, which we are not aware of any right now, but, but that is always a possibility. But to kick off the discussion, I'd like to turn it over to Jason Bulger in his other role as interim CMLP director. So, you probably have to reintroduce yourself this time.
Hello. So, in your packet, there's a couple pages that describe the background and the situation of where we find ourselves. To summarize, the Solar Implementation Task Force has done an excellent job at preparing sites that can be developed for solar in town, and they've also prepared a warrant article for this upcoming annual town meeting that will, originally was going to be solar at the high school, the landfill, a battery, and then also some microgrid controller. And that has been dialed back, so that they're only looking to do a battery and the feasibility for microgrid controller. We find ourselves in a situation where we have, over time, built a lot of solar saturation, which is to say, more solar than at times our system really wants to have on it. If we go below a certain threshold with solar, when we don't have enough load, the current power protection devices we have in place will not work correctly, and that could lead to damage to the transformers or to the grid, or shut off the power in some areas. So, we've been mindful of that and been watching it, and have been implementing a solution called the metering domain, which will allow us to eventually push power back onto the grid if we have excess solar. But that is not anticipated to be live for another couple of years. So, where we find ourselves now is with MCI Concord's impending closure, we expect the load to drop significantly on that side of town where that transformer is, where we already have WR Grace at four and a half megawatts of solar, and that's created a problem for that area. We're looking at the Solar Implementation Task Force's article. We were hopeful that perhaps the location of that battery could be moved, so that it would be on the bus or the transformer that would be helpful to address the solar issue, but unfortunately, it cannot because of the specificity of the article that's on the warrant. So, what we're considering here is solving that problem by building a large battery on that side of the, of town of the, where that transformer is. So, either at the WR Grace site itself, or the substation, or some other site on that side of town to address the solar saturation issue. So, the battery has a lot of benefits. The first one is to improve the stability of the grid to allow us to operate under current conditions and also add more solar onto the network. That's why the Solar Implementation Task Force is excited about batteries, it's because they allow more development of solar in town. So, that's another objective. And then third, having a battery allows us to shave the peak of the electrical usage in our town when there's a high demand, which can save tens of millions of dollars over the life of a battery. So, the primary benefit, again, and why we're doing this now and why it needs to happen sooner than later, is because of the stability of the grid. It also allows us to deal with the loss of MCI Concord's electrical demand, as well as continue to add solar. We've been in a position where people have started to come to CMLP to talk about large projects, commercial or educational projects with large amounts of solar, which is in line with the town's goals and with the Climate Action Plan, but we don't find ourselves in a position where we can say yes to all of these because of that, that load issue. So, this solves these problems. So, what we've done so far is we did have a meeting with the Chair of the Light Board and the Solar Implementation Task Force, they're both here today, and, you know, it, it seems like that this is something that everybody is on board with, but of course, they can't speak for their respective boards or task forces, because they haven't yet had a public meeting to address this. So, they are meeting, the Light Board meets on the 10th, and I believe the Solar Task Force meets on the 11th of, of April.
Fourth.
Oh, I'm sorry, the fourth, that's right, that's right, that's right. Thank you, Dean. I heard a voice just come from, yes, the fourth. So, in the next week and a half, both boards or, or task forces will have met to take this up with their larger group, but it does seem to be in line with the task force's goals of allowing more solar on the network in the future, and the Light Board's goals of both being fiscally responsible for its ratepayers and also ensuring the stability of the network.
So, most batteries have kind of a, a finite number of cycles of recharging and recharging, and I don't know what the technology is here. Do we know what the useful life of these batteries will be, and whether they're kind of replaceable in units, or whether, you know, it just becomes obsolete in five years?
Right. So, the batteries that we've looked at, and the Solar Implementation Task Force has looked at from Tesla, have a 15-year guarantee. So, when you buy the battery, they understand they might have to replace some cells to get to that level, but when you buy it, you buy it with the understanding that the manufacturer will guarantee a certain lifetime. So, it's not just going to be like a couple of years, and then the whole thing is trash.
And so, you can replace cells and keep it going indefinitely, as, as long as the technology is not obsolete?
Exactly.
I have a few questions. First of all, the WR Grace site, does WR Grace still own it, or does the CMLP own it, or?
I believe the town owns it.
The town owns it.
The town owns it. So, we just call it the WR Grace site, because that's where WR Grace was?
We do, yeah.
Okay, that explains that.
Better name.
Yeah. That was very confusing to me, because I was thinking, wait a minute, WR Grace closed down, so, okay, we just call it that site.
That's the way we deal with things in Concord. You always call something by what it used to be.
I understand that, but I'm just pointing that out, because when we go to town meeting, I, I was really confused when I started reading this. I was, okay, second thing is, it seems that Dean and his group were doing some great work trying to get going on solar, and then suddenly, everything changed with the MCI announcement, and that the state is kind of putting this unexpected thing in front of us, which is going to end up costing ratepayers some money and some stress. And I'm just wondering if there's any way that we should think about letting the state know that, that, you know, some of these decisions they're making are, I, I, maybe this is not subject for today, but maybe it's just more a comment for the future MCI task force, but we're also hearing from the water people, that there's going to be a lot of costs there. So, just something to keep in mind.
Can I say just-
Maybe something we could put on this special town meeting warrant would be secession from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
We act like that sometimes.
Well, this is April Fool's Day, right?
Right.
So, my two comments to that would be, first of all, hopefully, the battery is going to pay off a lot, not cost the ratepayers money in the long term, but also, the, the battery, think of it as an investment for what we want to do with the development at MCI Concord. So, whatever we put there, we're going to want to put solar on that, and the battery will enable us to do that, as opposed to, you know, trying to accommodate the loss of load, because a lot of what our energy efficiency efforts are actually to lower load. So, lower load isn't a problem, it's just being resilient enough to deal with what the town's goals.
Right. So, it's a great project. I'm, I'm in favor of having a battery. It's just, all of a sudden, we've had to move around a different direction. Does that mean it's going to cost more than we would have spent if we had done it the other way before MCI closed?
No.
All right. My, my last question then is, when we were walking up the stairs, Jason, you started to explain to me why it's important that we have a special town meeting now and not wait a year, because I had been thinking, well, there's a lot of preparation for this, there's studies, there's, I don't know, getting all the budgeting done, getting the ducks in order, whatever, and that we could come back to next year's town meeting and do it. And you started to explain to me that we need a town meeting vote for authorization for borrowing, I think. Can you explain about that?
Yeah. So, what, what the article is, what the Solar Implementation Task- Yeah, so what the article is, what the Solar Implementation Task Force's article was, was a request to authorize the borrowing, to expend it on projects like this or solar. So this is no different than that, it's very similar to their original article and kind of a reframing of it. And again, what, the reason why we feel like it's important to act now is that we know that the timelines have accelerated. Waiting another year would just mean that much longer before this will go online. Because the lead times are from the moment that you place the order, that's when you're waiting. So we can't place an order until we have authorization to borrow the money, and that's what the town meeting will enable us to do.
Are you ready to place an order now, except you're just waiting for this vote?
No, we are not ready to place the order today. But I think that, you know, if this is on the warrant, that we'll do everything we possibly can to be as ready as we, we can as soon as the vote takes place to order it as soon as possible.
Okay.
First of all, I'd like to thank you and Carrie for responding to this new information. And I know it's a lot of work to orchestrate a special town meeting, but I think it's, I think it's the right thing to do. And I also wanted to, as the liaison to both the Solar Task Force and the Light Board, I'd like to give a shout out to the Solar Task Force because, to me, they've been kind of the canary in the coal mine, telling us about the vulnerability of the grid. And I think now we're actually paying attention to that and doing something. So I think we're moving in the right direction, I'm really glad about that. I guess I'm wondering what will the actual size and the cost be? We don't have the specifics of what the article is. And I guess my thinking right now is we probably want to go smaller rather than larger because we're learning things, more things about how we could use some excess solar, the hydrogen products we could. And also, I remember when the Solar Task Force was still thinking about the size of the article, we were cautioned, they were cautioned, that the light plant is, already has a lot of work in front of it with the rollout of the smart meters and, and so, and that's true. I mean, we can appropriate a lot of money, but if we don't have the people to actually do it. So I would just, you know, like I said, I'm looking forward to seeing the amount, but I'd just like to keep it reasonable because as Terry said, we can always get more next year.
Yeah, the grid reliability issue of potentially backfeeding at the, at the main substation has been on the light plant, light board ra, light plant and light board radar for, for quite some time. And, and it is real. I think that what our memo that's in the packet calls our attention to is the fact that people have not stopped installing solar and predictably, our, our load profile has become much more dynamic. The, the light plant is on the verge of getting the AMI meters, the advanced metering infrastructure in place, which will help to make that more predictable. I would agree that it is time, in fact, I would have argued that it has been time for a while for us to engage in, in, you know, serious efforts to, to do this. Because this really is about the reliability of our local municipal electric function. And in, to that end, I would also argue, actually, for, for more and larger battery capacity rather than less, because the value of having a battery is to be, is being able to take power when it's, when the grid has too much power and release power when there's a shortage. And both of those have economic value to our system and to our ratepayers if we can do it in a substantial enough way to, to make a difference. If you look at how our electric rates are, are calculated, a significant portion of that has to do with the capacity that we, the capacity charges that we have, which is directly related to how much load we're, we're demanding at the peak times. So this type of system is the sort of thing that needs to be, that is very beneficial in, to deal with those intermittencies. Lastly, I guess the reason, and I'm sure that the town council and the moderator and all have been over this, but the, the real issue is that the, the in-town solar expansion article wasn't quite flexible enough about what the borrowing purposes were. So I, I think we should make it clear that the, or the, the, this particular purpose wasn't maybe envisioned, and that article might be a fairer way to put that. When it was, when it was start, and so what we should do is, is, is make it clear that, that that is the reason for this, the special town meeting is to create, use, create an article that is more flexible and more capable of that legal. There's nothing that would stop CMLP using, you know, resources that it had on hand right now from installing a battery anywhere in town that it wanted to. But the problem is it needs to borrow money for doing that, and it needs town meeting to authorize that.
So we had, we had, we had pretty focused discussions with the moderator and the town manager about the alternatives for doing this, whether it would be better to call a special town meeting within the current town meeting or to have a later date to call a special town meeting. And for matters, for issues of convenience and also of matters of cost of running a, a, a separate special town meeting, we decided that this was a, a better way to go and to deal with it. Because of this, because the article as was originally drafted was not flexible enough to include this particular project in, in the particular location that it needed to be.
Yeah.
You know, I appreciate you bringing up the economic argument proceeding on this. Jason, does this have an impact on eventually retiring some of our
The recs?
Recs, yeah.
Not, not directly, no.
No, but if we have more?
Oh, yes, so, I mean, we, if we, this will allow us to generate more solar in town and keep more recs from the generation.
Yeah, that, that's what I'm after, that, that connection there. Because I think that's important, thank you.
I just want to clarify what Mark was saying. I'm looking at the original article. What in here was not, about the borrowing part? I understand about the location, but what, what needs to be added in terms of the purposes of borrowing that was missing in here?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Well, what were you saying, that the purpose of borrowing?
Yeah, so the, I mean, this article was meant to expand our solar generation. And in the process of doing that, almost, you know, collaterally with doing that, adding so, adding battery storage to take advantage of that new solar generation without exacerbating the grid reliability problem that, but as we, as we said, saw in the introduction, the solar projects aren't quite ready to go. The idea of putting a battery in makes sense, but because this article, Article 33, specified some specific locations, those locations are in the wrong point. And the interpretation is that you can't just borrow money for batteries under this and then put them someplace other than the places that we're in.
It's about the location.
It's, it comes down to the location, so, and it only, if we weren't talking about, you know, if we didn't have this proposal to expand those solar batteries at all, we'd be maybe having this conversation separately.
Okay.
Okay, are we ready?
So I, I think that may, we've covered the, the technology issues. I assume that there's some mechanics about this calendar that we should probably address before we, because the motion that we're contemplating doing is, is moving to open the, the town meeting calendar. So we need to talk about that calendar.
And I'm happy to, to walk through that. So, so we are looking for the board to vote this evening to open a warrant. I will note that under town bylaw, warrant should be open for 10 days unless there is a specific emergency or other compelling reason for the board to close it in less than 10 days. And we are suggesting that there is a compelling set of circumstances here, and that really has to do with being able to complete the town meeting process, public hearing, publications before, or, or this month before we would open the annual town meeting. So we are proposing, again, that you would open this evening and vote to close this evening, to close the warrant on Friday, April 5th at noon. So that is a, a short timetable. But by doing that, it does allow us to, to meet the other required timetables, which include mailing the warrant to all households 14 days prior to special town meeting, being able to conduct the finance committee public hearing, which we know will be required with this article on Tuesday, April 16th. If a warrant article comes in that requires a planning board public hearing, there is a longer timetable that's associated with that. But again, closing this Friday would allow for a planning board public hearing if one is needed because a warrant article comes in that has to go before the planning board. The special town meeting would be on Wednesday, May 1st. That would be the third night of town meeting.
So this doesn't require a planning board hearing, but you're wondering, an article might come in during the week?
Yes, and we have to plan for that.
Okay, thank you.
I thought I saw somewhere else that the special town meeting was April 29th.
Well, that was an earlier draft of the schedule.
All right, good.
Just saying it out loud, that's four weeks from tonight.
Oh, I know, it's crazy. The only problem that might come up about this calendar, I don't personally have a problem, but we've had criticism in the past that the public hearing will be during school vacation week. And I don't see any way around that with this calendar, but I just wanted to point that out. Because we did get that criticism another year when we had to do something during special school vacation week.
Yeah, and, and we are certainly aware of that. We did look at lots of different calendars to, to have the public hearing occur sometime other than the school vacation week, and it just wasn't possible. And I think with the understanding that this, a grid scale battery is something that the community has been talking about and, and it is directly tied to the work of the Solar Task Force and Article 33, we thought, well, that's, that's what we have to do, that's the only time that we can have it.
Think so?
I guess I, I do have one other question. In, in what way does, knowing this is, this is going to be addressed, impact Article 33 in, in terms of, does that mean that we're still going to proceed with the, with the reduced scope of Article 33 anyway? Or is, does this actually effectively replace that article?
So Dean is here. I know that they're not meeting until Thursday, but, you know, we've talked about that. One scenario is that they could move this article instead. Another scenario is that they could reduce the request further in that article to leave the battery out and leave the battery in this one. But there would definitely be a coordination between the light plant, the light board, and the Solar Task Force to make sure that we're all on the same page and communicating a clear message so that the public isn't confused by, I have to vote for this and then that. And so we would, we, I think, I think we all share that goal.
Yeah, the, the thought that occurred to me was that it might make sense to draft this article so that it is, in effect, supersedes and includes whatever would have, elements of Article 33 are remaining anyway, so that then town meeting only has to deal with it once, and maybe that's a more efficient use of town meeting time.
Right, and Article 33 could be postponed until after this. And then, and it would be a fallback in case this doesn't pass or something like that.
So if the Light Board doesn't meet until April 10th and the warrant closes on April 5th, how do we know what the language of the article will be?
We, we will have to submit it at a staff level.
It's going to have to be pretty flexible.
The Solar Task Force can take up some conversation in our meeting on Thursday.
So we'll have their input.
I suppose the Light Board has time to post to go to the same meeting too, if they wanted to.
That's a good idea.
Okay.
Okay.
One, one more.
Hello, Carmen Reese, Town Moderator. I would just note that in addition to a date, you need a time for calling the special town meeting. So, and I would suggest that you call it for 7:10 on that Wednesday evening.
Okay.
Have we covered everything now?
I guess with the tailwind, we're likely to there's, I'm wondering, is there any chance that we're going to be finished with annual town meeting on Tuesday night? So this is the only thing on Wednesday? Hope springs eternal.
We never are.
We never are.
Okay. You done?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll try, let me give it a try. A move to open the 2024 special town meeting warrant today, April 1st, 2024, and to close the warrant on Friday, April 5th, 2024, at 12:00 noon. Given the unexpected upcoming closure of MCI Concord during FY '25, its anticipated impact on CMLP, the resulting urgency of appropriating funds for a battery installation in an appropriate location, and the cost saving in combining the special town meeting with the annual town meeting, the Select Board is voting in accordance with the compelling circumstances referenced in the special town meeting notice bylaw for the warrant to be opened for less than 10 days. Furthermore, the special town meeting will be held May 1st, starting at 7:10 PM, 2024.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so that, that means that then we get on to now we have the draft. So I guess really we were asking, thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
You did two tonight, right? So the, I guess, Mary, you want to give us a report on the meeting this morning with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council? And also, the status of the charge that she's working on? And give us an idea of when, when we may have to reconvene in order to approve it?
Sure, I'll give it a shot.
Yeah. As long as you're here.
Yeah, right. I know that people are eager to get going on MCI Concord Advisory Board and to start doing community input. I have gotten quite a bit of community input from, after our last meeting on Monday, both emails and phone calls. I continue to reach out and talk to people to learn more about what we can expect during this early-stage advisory board. We also have an outstanding item about what constitutes a quorum. We had a meeting today with MAPC, which gave us some good information about how they may be able to help, especially around the community outreach and the visioning part of our effort. So, as you know, we're all quite busy right now and focused on town meeting. So I thought it would be better to do this well rather than to do it quickly. So I have decided to continue to get feedback, to continue to get input, and write, rewrite the charge based on the input I've received and the input I got just before this meeting and input that I will get. I do have a phone call scheduled with a woman who runs a, a visioning firm, a consulting firm, and I expect, she's also a Concord resident. So I'm expecting she'll give me some really great input about how to do effective community outreach. And after I get all that together, I'll make sausage and bring it back.
Okay.
So do you think that will be, I guess our next meeting is April 22nd?
That's right.
Except actually now, we have to meet on the 16th for the public hearing. We could maybe do it then.
When's the 16th?
It's a Tuesday. Two weeks from tomorrow.
What do other people think? What do you think, Mark?
It's really your call, Mary, if you think you could be ready by then.
Sure, what do you think, Linda?
And if not?
Go ahead.
I'm going to guess there's still a lot to pull together for this.
You know, there is. It's, but at some point, you just, you know, I'm trying to balance, we're getting, I'm getting more and more input, learning more and more, with at some point, you've just got to go with what you've got. We've all been there, right? So I guess we can shoot for the 16th. And we'll put that on the agenda. Good. Thank you.
April 16th. Okay, now we are dealing with our input into the choice of items to go on to the consent agenda for the town meeting. And I think we have a draft of that, don't we?
Yes, we do.
Good evening. Thank you very much for considering the proposed consent calendar and giving me some feedback on it. It's very much appreciated. Just as a kind of overview of where we are for annual town meeting, we have 53 articles. We may have as many as six articles that won't have a motion under them. Those include, I think, Article 7, Carrie, which is line item adjustments.
No.
There are going to be, there is going to be a motion under that. All right, as many as five then. And I believe that the Finance Committee is not going to move Article 14 on free cash. The School Committee is determined not to move Article 21, the amenities building. It may be that we will not have a motion under Article 33, which was the solar expansion article in light of the special town meeting that's just been called, but we'll see. The DEI Commission indicated that it will not make a motion under Article 41, the task force to review the historic, the historical commission and the HDHC charges. And I believe, Carrie, there is no motion under Article 53 debt rescission. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
What about Article 25?
Yeah, that was pulled.
The Middle School Stabilization Fund.
Article 25 is the appropriation of the Middle School Stabilization Fund. Shannon, what, do you remember what the, I thought the Finance Committee had decided to move that one and not the other one. They're not going to move either one?
No.
Okay, super. Well, back to six then. Okay. Okay. The proposed consent calendar in front of you has 19 articles, and if we do include all of those, it would leave us with roughly 25 articles to handle at annual town meeting. So if we just walk through the proposed consent calendar, I want to make a couple of notes to you about it. First, about an article that is included, and then I just want to note a few articles that I considered including and did not, and explain why, and then I will be interested in your thoughts. First is Article 32. That is the fossil fuel, fossil free fuel bylaw amendment. I did include that on the consent calendar. It has been in front of town meeting with very strong support several times. These bylaw amendments are not required, but recommended by the state, and it does appear that it behooves us to make these amendments in order to remain part of the pilot program in good stead. However, there are a couple of changes in the bylaw that are not insignificant. There was no controversy about this at the hearing, but the two changes, one is that major renovations would be included, not just new construction. And the second is that the exemption for affordable housing would be deleted, which appeared at the hearings to be just fine with the affordable housing community.
Is this a zoning bylaw or a general bylaw?
No, it's a general bylaw.
So it only needs a majority?
It only needs a majority, but the consent calendar does have two zoning bylaws on it, which would require a two-thirds vote, and so therefore the entire consent calendar will require a two-thirds vote. So I just wanted to draw that one to your attention, to make sure that you're comfortable with that being on the consent calendar. And I'll remind us all also that I will go through the consent calendar slowly at the start of the meeting and pause after each article to allow any 10 citizens to wish to, to remove any article from the consent calendar for full deliberation in the ordinary course, if they want to do that. So some articles that I considered including and did not, Article 4, which is ratification of personnel board classification actions, and Article 5, which is ratification of the classification and compensation plan. I contemplated including those on the consent calendar, but it was suggested to me by some citizens that they felt that there had been enough changes in the classification and compensation plan that, some of them were discussed last year when the new plan was adopted, but they weren't quite done with it. And so I think we certainly would have 10 citizens who would pull those articles off the consent calendar if they were on there. So it seemed to me that we should probably not put them on, and we should have them on for a full discussion. The tourist bylaw amendments, that's Article 42. I thought about putting that one on, but there was some conversation even among the Select Board about whether all the changes that maybe were necessary and appropriate were being made, and so it just seemed to me after the hearing that more discussion was probably merited on that one, but I'm open to discussion on that point. And then finally, Article 52, unpaid bills. That could be an article that one puts on the consent calendar, but in fact, I can't remember ever in my town meeting experience having a motion under the unpaid bills article. And so it seemed to me that it was probably worth talking about that.
I think we have some this year, don't we?
We do.
We do, exactly. There will be a motion under that article, which is why I was considering whether we should put it on the consent calendar, and my feeling was that we should not, because it is an unusual circumstance for us to have a motion under that. That's been a placeholder for years, and I can't remember in the last 20 years having a motion under that article. So it just bears some discussion, and there may well be questions about why it's different this year.
Okay.
So I invite the Select Board's comments. And two other things I just want to note. One is that I do plan to pre-schedule as a high-interest article the MBTA Communities bylaw for Tuesday night at 7:15, and we will print and announce that in the Finance Committee report so that everybody is aware of that. We didn't have the same level of interest in that article at the hearings as we have had throughout the process, but throughout the process and statewide and in the press and the media, there's been a lot of attention to this issue, and it is a big deal. So it seems that it's totally appropriate to pre-schedule this as a high-interest article so people know when it will be taken up. It has been suggested to me by a couple of voters that we should consider pre-scheduling, and just bear with me while I get the number, Article 22, which is the middle school naming article. And it is true that there has been a very high level of interest in that article, certainly letters in the Concord Bridge and lots of discussion at hearings and at various meetings around town. But I really have a question about whether it's appropriate to pre-schedule as a high-interest article, a purely advisory article by town meeting, because this is a topic on which town meeting does not have legal authority. It can urge and make a recommendation, but it can't actually do anything here. And so it doesn't seem appropriate to me to pre-schedule that article as a high-interest article. I did give it some thought and was cognizant of the desires of some folks to have it pre-scheduled for a time certain. But just more context for the consent calendar.
So with that in mind, are you expecting that that'll likely fall on Monday, Sunday, Monday night, I guess?
I think so.
What?
Article 22. I think so. Because we will have several. You know, Article 7, the budget line item adjustments, could be an article, I don't have the motion for that, but if I had the motion, I would consider putting that on the consent calendar, but...
Okay, we'll get you a motion.
Yeah, well, kind of need it by tomorrow morning for this one to send the...
I think we have it drafted.
Okay, all right, okay. So we, you know, we could incorporate that, but then I see there are a number of articles that will be not moved or on the consent calendar.
What about Article 15, which I think is totally non-controversial?
Yeah, I was going to suggest that one as well.
Yeah. Yeah, I should have mentioned that one. I did consider putting that on the consent calendar, and that article, other permutations of it that have been, before town meeting previously, have been on the consent calendar because we've looked at this issue so many times and it's had so much support. I felt that it was a little different this year at the hearings because people questioned what is the interaction between the residential property tax exemption and this exemption, and when you put them all together. So it just seemed to me that there may be more public and voter questions about, now that we've changed the landscape a little bit, how this particular exemption fits in to the overall scheme. So I would certainly, if the Select Board is feeling that it's appropriate for the consent calendar, I would certainly take that into account.
I think, I think, we did, we had a little discussion about it last, at our last meeting, and it's really, so few people apply for it anyway because of the, because of the income and the income requirements are so low, and the application is so demanding, that very few people use it anyway. So I don't think we should do away with it, but I think it's something that's so totally routine, because I don't see how anyone could object to it. And I would say the same thing also about, what about the 18 with acceptance of easements? I assume that...
That's on there.
It is?
It is.
I think we could try to put 15 on the consent calendar, and then if 10 citizens wanted to come off, that's fine, too.
Yeah.
So Carmen, you said the two personnel board classification, Article 4 and 5, that you've heard from people that this is something they want to have, they want to talk about?
I have, yes.
I'm surprised. So you think that would be taken off the consent agenda?
I do.
I think there's, considering the fact that the following article, number six, is posing basically a replacement of the personnel bylaw, there's something to be said for going through what the process is today, so that then when the explanation comes from the Personnel Board about what's changing in the bylaws and what the implications of those changes are, town meeting will have just been through the sort of normal process. So even though on a, if we weren't changing the bylaw, I'd be kind of inclined to say, you know, especially like the prior classifications, as we all know, is simply ratification of things that the Personnel Board has already done. And so... Maybe I'd try and split that and take four off and leave five on or something.
Did you hear anything, Carmen, about Article 43, adding this new ambulance fund? Is there any controversy or anything about that?
No, and that didn't attract any comment or question at the public hearing.
What about the, is the five cent bag fee on the consent account...
It is now.
Right, so that one could be one that 10 people decide they want to take off, but it seems to me that it's fairly straightforward. You've got the farm stands that have said, we don't have the equipment, and it's really a compliance issue for us, a logistical compliance issue, so we just want an exemption. And it's pretty simple and self-explanatory, and no one raised a question about it at the hearings.
And are we still thinking that 10 is a good threshold, or do we have some flexibility there, 10 voters to remove something?
Do we, which way would you go?
I would probably go up a bit.
Yeah. So for a number of years, it was...
Five.
It was five.
Yeah.
And it became tender in COVID, because it, you know, when we were having meetings with masks on or outdoors, it seemed that, you know, maybe a larger number of people should want to make us all stay longer in proximity of potential disease to take things off the consent calendar. And that seems to have felt very comfortable for people.
Okay.
So we just kept it.
Does this require a motion, or is this...
It does not. I'm just getting your input, and it's on the agenda so that we have this discussion at an open meeting, and I will take all of your comments under advisement and revise the consent calendar accordingly to include Article 7. Carrie, you'll send me the motion.
I'm thinking again about Article 15, which is the senior means tested, and I hear your point about people are paying more attention now to the types of exemptions we have. So this might be helpful to educate people as far as what this does and doesn't do.
So that's an argument in favor of not having it on the consent calendar?
It is.
Yeah.
And then we, that means we might then want to do a real slide deck on that with the, all the details of it. No, if we're not going to have it? If you want to explain it to people, then you really should really explain it to people.
This leads, that's a good point. My question is, are you going to allow slide decks and presentations this year, you know, three minutes each, or what's the format going to be on the...
Sure, yes, it'll be the same. We have our, we have the moderators' town meeting coordination meeting, which is coming up...
14th.
Yes, Friday the 14th. And I will assign times to everybody on what their presentations will be. We fully expect PowerPoint presentations and... And typically what happens is people don't have quite enough time for all the slides they'd like to present, and so they save some in advance in case there's a question that gets asked, and then they can pop those up and answer the question. So yes, we, we will do that. And so everybody who, who has an article that's on the consent calendar is, is on warning that
Be ready.
they, they have to have a slide presentation, because, at least with their motions, because it's always possible their article is pulled off, so they need to be ready.
So what are you saying, Henry, that if we don't, if we keep it off the consent agenda, then we'll have to have a PowerPoint presentation? And you'd like to avoid that, or what?
Well, Carmen is saying we have, we have to have it ready anyway, in case it gets pulled off.
Right, but say.
But it, but if it's not on it, we are more likely to need it, and maybe it's worth more effort.
Right, well, your point, Mary, was to educate people. So if you have just, you know, a couple of slides, otherwise.
Well, the slides really, if what we're, if, the point we're trying to make on that is how almost useless it is, is we want to have a slide that shows what the parameters are for qualification. And then copies of all the forms, you know, show you that it's 16 pages long with, you need a copy of, you know, your mother-in-law's tax return and all that stuff.
I'm not sure whoever the presenter is is going to take that angle.
It would be the Board of Assessors. And they, and my, my, my expectation is the Board of Assessors would explain Chapter 193, the Acts of 2022, and probably refrain from too much commentary about the difficulty of the process.
Okay, but.
I mean, but it is education, you're right.
We had a slide last year, now that I'm thinking of it, that needs some work. But it was a handout, and it showed all the different ways that you could reduce your taxes and what.
I remember that.
Remember that?
I do.
And that slide wasn't perfect, it needs some work. But there was U-Cargill, there was residential, the senior tax exemption, they had the whole list. So we could revive that and put that slide on. We just need, like, if you're going to do it at all, you need a slide.
Well, who do you anticipate making this presentation, someone from the Board of Assessors? If.
Who's listed as the article sponsor?
The Board of Assessors.
It is the Board of Assessors.
Yes.
They're not here. We'll choose them.
Tell them what to do.
Sorry.
Give it to Mikey, he'll eat it.
Yeah, right, exactly, exactly.
Well, I, I still like it for the consent calendar myself, but notwithstanding that it's a good idea to update the, the, the handout that Terry was talking about, about ways to reduce your tax burden and pass that out, maybe as a way of encouraging 10 people not to want to listen to this.
So we put that on the table?
Yeah, it doesn't, but it doesn't, but yeah, it doesn't prevent it from being on the consent agenda.
Right.
So, you know, I'm going, are we done with that one for a little discussion?
We've decided.
So as, as is almost always the case, the less important something is, the more conver, the more discussion it, it creates.
That happens, that happens, yes. But you're going to decide, Carmen, right? Based on what you're hearing?
I will, I will decide. It, it sounds like the consensus may be mostly in favor of having the discussion, so that people get an explanation of what this exemption is. There's an opportunity to publicize the fact that there's an exemption for those who might not already know that it's there. And anybody who's got a question about what the impact of this exemption is, when you add it together with other things that, that, you know, with the residential tax exemption, can get an answer to that question, and then they might feel better informed.
That's my expectation, is that, is that we might have an article here where we're essentially inviting questions and comments about something that has the residential tax exemption, which has nothing to do with passing or not passing the senior means tested property tax exemption. And so we run the risk of, of having a town meeting discussion that's kind of outside the four corners of the article, it's in, it's in front of town meeting.
Don't worry, Mark, I'll have the gavel.
Oh, okay. I mean.
As well as the microphone switch.
So maybe, maybe the, what we might need to do.
No trapdoor.
In anticipation of such a question, though, is we may need to have an answer to a question, which is very well bordering on, on that particular situation.
Right, right. Well, I think it's a reasonable question to ask, you know, when you put it together with these other things, what is the total impact? For people who are looking at it holistically, but that's kind of the end of it.
Right, okay.
Right, or can I qualify for both? You know, that kind of thing.
Exactly.
Right.
When this, when the assessors had the hearing here in the hearing room about the increase in the valuations, remember? They did a very good job of bounding it to that topic. And, you know, other things came into the conversation, and they, I thought they did a really good job of keeping within the scope of that discussion. So they've already shown that they know how to do that.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, you know, and, and, you know, we remind people that we, we have an agenda at town meeting, and it is a deep agenda. And so we just really have to confine ourselves to the agenda items if we're going to get through it in an expeditious way. So, and I, I think people understand and appreciate that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Linda had something.
Well, I was just going to read, I heard your comments, Carmen, and thank you, on Article 42, the tourist bylaw amendment. And, you know, I, I remember some of that conversation. You know, I'm just wondering if this couldn't go on the consent agenda? You know, unless, again, we're trying to educate the public, or.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. Does anybody remember what our questions were?
No, I don't remember at all. Well, I for one raise some questions, because whatever handout we were given that night.
Yep.
There were still some problems with it, and Chris went back and clarified what the, what the language was going to be. So I was satisfied when, when I saw.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, that's another one I don't have the motion for, so.
Which one is this?
Forty-two, the tourist bylaw.
Oh.
Did we have any questions from the public on that? I don't remember.
I don't think so.
Then I think it could go on the consent calendar.
Me too.
So, so just one, one comment to, to process. It's, it's my recollection that particularly at the Select Board hearing, the first hearing, presenters at the hearing were discouraged from having even drafts of their town meeting presentations ready to display then. And I'm wondering, when you get into the process, which I know is a heavy lift, to make sure that people have their presentations ready, I'm hoping that you'll come back and give us some feedback on whether or not that approach had any backend impacts on, on the work that, that you and town staff have to do to prepare for town meeting? Because I know how challenging that is and what a tight town line it goes on. And so I'm hoping that, that when we start to evaluate how we prepared for this town meeting, we, we think about that and, and think about what, what happens in our hearings.
Yeah, well, it was, I think it was premature at that, at the point we were going through it, but also if we had to have each presentation to the Select Board be a reversal, we could not have, it all, we already had, had to carry this over to a couple of additional meetings, even with a fairly, you know, superficial view of the items.
Yeah, I would contend, though, that telling people to get it done in three minutes and that they're presenting as they would be under that three-minute timer running would have led to maybe more succinct presentations at the hearing than, than what actually occurred. And so I'm, that, and that's fine if the hearings are, because they're not timed events, and we, we, you know, can choose to, to continue them. However, what I'm curious about now is how well-prepared those same presenters really are when, when it comes time to actually present for town meeting, and, and what kind of workload that creates for the moderator and, and the rest of staff who have to help them prepare.
Yeah, I, I will say that, you know, for the past many years, I have used the time that people took to go through their slide presentations during the hearings as kind of a benchmark, in thinking about how much time reasonably people need to be able to do a good job on their presentations at town meeting. But I don't really have that as a benchmark this year. So, you know, we'll, you know, it'll be a little bit of gut feel about like, yeah, you can get this done in this many minutes. And, and then, then we have to rely on people to stand in front of the mirror and do, and practice with their PowerPoints, so that they know they can really do it within the time limit that they've been given. So, so we'll hope for the best.
Yes, we will.
While we still have you here, we usually have a post-audit meeting with you after the town meeting.
Yes.
To see what worked and what didn't work.
Mm-hmm.
So I just want to point out that this year I'd like to look at the process for putting warrants, putting articles on the warrant.
Sure.
When the Select Board is the sponsor, what does it mean to be a sponsor? Because we get kind of confused a little bit this year. So if you just keep that on your radar, we'll talk about that after town meeting.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Yep, okay. Thank you all.
Thanks for seeking our input on this, it's a good conversation.
Thank you, very good conversation, thanks.
I think we have nothing left on the agenda, so I think we have to.
Move to adjourn, a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.